All right, call it as it were. First item on the agenda is timeout rooms. Now, I'd like to start a few of these topics with, can we get right to the point? Maybe have a high level leadership conversation to start right, so.
I know you've got lots of data here.
You're all excited, Jane, but. So can we have a high level discussion on perhaps commissioning a team on best practices and potentially improving or eliminating timeout rooms, Steve?
Sure. One of the things that we've spent a lot of time doing internally is talking with staff about current processes and practices. That's part of what Jane is going to share with you. We've talked the entire spectrum from retention to elimination. So I think we've already begun that conversation internally and putting together a team to look at that in greater detail, I think, is a great idea.
Is anybody not aligned with that, or?
No, I think that's, I think that's a great idea. Do we also make sure that we have some community members as part of, as part of that team?
We actually talked about that and we talked about it more along the lines of the kind of work we did with Transition Services Center, where we looked for a broad-based team of people that came in, both parents who would represent students who are participants in the program and interested community members.
And maybe they even like that generates some energy for an ongoing dialogue, you know, whatever.
And is this, this is something we're looking to create rapidly and something we're going to spend a month in development, this two months to schedule.
I don't know what's passed to you.
It's passed to me as minimum the first of the year, maybe sooner.
I would doubt we'll have a meeting before the first of the year. We've only got three days this week, three days next week.
First of the year meeting, first of the year shortly after the first of the year.
Yeah, we're aligned to get you up, let's go, right, so how fast, I don't know.
We've got to get people identified and then invited and then schedule a meeting and certainly we can do that fairly quickly.
I don't want to jump the gun on what you were going to talk about, but I would want any kind of review, maybe not just about procedures, but also about literally the physical appearance of these things and the placement of them within the building.
Yeah, like I said, our conversation internally with the team has run the gamut from retention as is to elimination, complete elimination. So those are the goalposts from our conversation. Yeah, we can definitely do that. That's something that we've.
There's obviously some disportionality there. So that'll be really important, especially if there's any fine education to us. Plenty of folks, I'm not going to specifically speak to that, probably even from a cultural education about that impact.
Would there be opportunity to get specialist input from some disabilities?
Sure. That was one of the things we did with Transition Services, we looked for outside experts to provide feedback and input.
We've got experts here this meeting, so it'd be just an opportunity to.
And we have some of our neighboring districts that are, we're working on this together and they have hit on some experts that they are looking to bring in. And I've had a couple of conversations with someone that I contacted, Steve, and a couple of other agencies that are, you know, it's not just Iowa City, it's not just Iowa. So there's resources out there that we want to take a look at.
And I guess I'm thinking the end product would be a district policy.
Yes, and a recommendation.
Yeah.
Of the city, pardon?
Well, again, sort of whatever we settle on is the right thing to do would be embodied in some sort of district policy. And then each policy, it seems like, I understand your work ethic, you know, it's a work in progress. Some things are appearing on the website and some of them, they're not quite policies and some of them, it's ambiguous whether they're sort of free as to whether they're going above college after one or three, you know, these things are going to go above and beyond one or three. I assume we'd have to have that by their policy. Great if you all would take a push out there, because that's not easy.
Did we add teachers to that, teachers to that list?
Yeah, that was part of our TSC work. So it's support staff, staff, administrative team members, parents of students who are participants in the program, community members who have an interest or a level of expertise and outside experts.
So we're aligned to look at best practices and improving, you know, or eliminating timeout rooms. Are we going to follow the transitions model in terms of that way?
And some of the stuff that I've, I've read, I think we've got to go toward a goal of the only, finding of students in seclusion units is restricted for the sole use in emergency situations where the child's behavior poses an imminent danger, a physical injury to the child or others. And like many have said, you know, I don't think the 21st century learning environment, you know, there are alternatives to these. We should look at it. We should look at the cost effect and especially since we're going through our facilities master plan. If we've got these in all of these schools, we definitely should take a strong look at this now and make sure that if there's need to restructure the facilities master plan to accommodate for the elimination of these and some alternative, as a common room or something like that. I think that that's something we've got to get into our facilities management, or facilities master plan discussion right away.
Can we get parents that, when we're looking at parents, I don't, sometimes we can get the most vocal parents and they're not even necessarily that right. So can we make sure we got a little bit of a balance there?
Yeah, parents of students who are currently.
Currently, currently, I mean, and there may be a parent that, you know, I understand and I appreciate that support, but I know that sometimes as a mother than me, they don't always get a voice in that. Other times they probably will. Because for them, they're not too bound, they get their voices in the experience, it's sometimes important.
So we're aligned with this improvement. Is there anything in the group review tonight? Because I'd like to have some other topics too, so.
That's totally up to you. The only thing I'll add to that is part, a huge chunk of our conversation has, has cycled around training. So it, in, or overlapping with some of the initiatives already going on are MTSs efforts as far as the tier one, tier two, tier three supports, making sure that those are all in place. Laura Daley's been doing a lot of work with that, providing a lot of oversight. PBIS has been in the district for quite a while now. We have some schools that are definitely further along than others. That's another key piece. The research shows us that enables us to de-escalate situations a little more, a little more effectively and efficiently. And then making sure that we provide, our coaches met this morning and talking about some pretty specific targeted coaching to our behavior staff on how to work with students in a more effective way, getting better at our FBA process and behavior analysis kinds of pieces too. So that was also a big component. We can talk space and we can talk some approaches, but I think the training piece has to be pretty huge and then some system-wide things that need to be implemented as we move down this path. And as I said before, we're having a lot of conversation at the state level with, with a lot of neighboring school districts who are very interested in, in all the sitting down problem solving because they're all in the same situation. We'd like to, to continue to just use this one safety as of a concern, it is not meant to be a punishment, but those are things that we can always improve on and that's what we want to do. What is best practice? It keeps everybody safe, including the staff and the kids.
All right, anything else you need to mention, Jane?
No. I do just want to thank, I know there were a lot of people that were here the last time and are here again today that waited a long time, I think, for your, your interest and, and your sharing of information to bring this forward.
Please, my personal action is that.
Hi, this is great. Let's, let's go, let's roll.
Is it possible to just go around the table once and just sort of communicate an idea where the board sits?
I think we just did in line.
Okay, well, so we did this once before. Is there anyone that is in favor of keeping seclusion rooms as our sole means of?
Well, they're not our sole means.
Well, no, I understand, but that they would, that they would be used for anything other than, as I just stated, as a physical injury or, or of the child or others.
I don't have a problem with that myself, but let's get the experts and come back with their information, right? So is anybody not aligned? I mean, I'm just trying to move us to the next thing. I got a bunch of things.
I understand, we're pushing it along.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Speaking now for a first-hand piece.
Make sure it doesn't fall, doesn't fall through the cracks. It doesn't sound like it will, but if we don't have something in January, let's have an update, you know.
We've already got a lot of things going right now, a lot of work done by district staff, so it's not, it's, it's top of our, our list right now.
So you also proposed timeline, right? Does anybody feel the need to speak yet? I want, could you go? All right, moving on. Geo bonds.
Sure.
So again, high level, we got the thought exchange input. Is there anything we really need to review? I mean, we've read it. We can come back to Jane, right, talking more?
Yes. So I'll just go real quick here. There's two reports that you have. Essentially, they're, they're, the one's a slide deck, the other's the report on it. We had about seventeen hundred participants through the process. Go to the real high-level piece, three questions asked and the first two question.
We got all that right.
Yeah, the number one's HVAC, so that's already part of the work that we're doing. So that's the, the high-level piece on that one. A lot of impact stories in there. I'll stop and ask if you have questions in the interest of time.
So we talked, talked about doing thought exchange and then maybe doing some live listening posts or whatever we want to call them.
So if you look at the second report on page four, you'll see the participation numbers, the, the raw numbers. Kristen, who's not here right now, ran the percentages. I think she sent those to you and I so that you could see which buildings had the, the highest percentage, lowest percentage. That was a question that the board had raised about the possibility of going out and doing some listening posts at those schools that had low participation percentage.
I don't know why we wouldn't like do three and try to target areas that were lower.
We can definitely set those up.
It might be like one city area, one west, one liberty, right?
Sure.
Target the schools that are lower.
Yep. Would you like us to set those up?
What timing do you think?
Well, I think we will. So I think January tenth, or ninth, whatever it is, you're going to come back with kind of a general recommendation of something. So I think Jane will be able to do that.
Shall we tentatively work on locations for you?
Yes.
Times?
Six thirty to eight.
Is the idea that we will be done with our review of the facility master plan by the end of January? I thought that was what Craig told us earlier, that we need to have it settled so that they can start drafting.
Yeah.
Bonds, not just the facilities master plan review, but how much is it in bond?
It's more the bond language that winds up being the real issue because we at some point want to turn this over to a community committee and they need concrete bond language.
That's why I think it would be best to move us between first and second meeting in January.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's got to be in January.
Is there, is there any way that, you said between the first and, oh, never mind, I think it's wrong.
Ten to twenty-four.
Is there any way that we can, depending on where our education committee is, be able to do those meetings?
Uh, yeah. Are you thinking of the one that's coming up?
I'm not talking about next week. I'm talking about in January of seventeen.
We don't have one in January.
I don't think we have one in January.
Can we go this month? Yeah, it's November.
Well, we might as well do it on that day, so we don't have to leave that off.
Just not go another two days.
February twenty-third.
I'm just saying, I mean, in my head, I'm like, I have no one.
Try to double them up, sure.
Yeah, right on.
We could potentially look at moving committee meetings off-site too.
No, a lot of times we've done six thirty to eight.
Yep. Six thirty to eight, kind of one each in the Liberty area, west area, city area, in neighborhood catchment area that had a low participation rate. Six thirty to eight, get some dates out there, work with some of those schools, give you some choices.
Are there opportunities just to make sure that this, this fairly close, fairly well located when it comes to public transportation?
Yep.
I guess I'm still just kind of worried about, so that leaves us one meeting and those things to settle everything. Is there a problem?
No pressure.
Yeah, I know.
No pressure.
I mean, would it be crazy to like after one of these public sessions have a work session?
Well, how about we get these dates out, how we look at.
We'll bring those back for you on the ten.
We could certainly get into a weekly rhythm, I guess is your point, which is probably right.
We'll probably email them out to you ahead of time, just so that if we can find some dates that look like they work, some times that look like they work. So that way you can look at your calendars. If there's any major obstacles to it, we'd like to know about that sooner rather than later.
Oh, we want all seven B there, will we?
No, but if I pick a date that none of you are available, we're going to look for a new date.
Boy, if it were me, I would say, well, we're just making a meeting and we can all go.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that either.
Get all, all of them.
Right, that's what we should.
Yep. Just post it as a meeting, one topic.
Whoever shows up, whoever shows up, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's okay if you show up.
If we don't have a quorum, it's all right. You can still run it as a listening post.
Okay, I'm just saying, it's, it comes up. Yeah, it'd be nice.
But we, we'd be really community, essentially just be community. Well, we'll think about how to get the input. I mean, open mic night never works, but what we're trying to make sure is, thought exchange did, it's like, we want people to have the opportunity to input. Steve, I guess we need a proposal and the best way to, people are given, but I've attempted small group sessions and or no, or, you know, something like that.
Oh, you could almost do it like when you did your whole.
Your bell schedule.
Your, your D O E had all the people that, your survey. And you could say, you just go down to schools and you just have an order and if somebody comes and they have an issue they want to raise about hills or that, they can come and speak to it, then you go on to the next school. If no one's there to speak about that, then you just go through and go through the line.
Have we ever really looked at before listening posts for our faculty? I'm just saying, because the likelihood of people that filled out this thought exchange that I was saying before, like.
It's possible.
It may be. We don't have names and we filled it out, so we won't know who comes, but if we go to places with low participation in the survey, hopefully the people that will come from that catchment area won't be duplicates.
Possible. Only thing is, because even when I'm looking at this, even though my granddad went to Twain, her little, city highs, healthies are high.
Right.
So.
They might live in that area.
Yeah, they might just be, you know what I'm saying, maybe a parent was like, I'm not about to fill it out for my grandwood if I just fill it out for some of these.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I feel kind of the same way with the thought exchanges with listening posts. You can't assume it's, it's a scientific sample.
No, I know, I'm just saying like it's a likelihood that there's tons of overlap there.
All right, anything else on Geo bond or facilities master plan?
Well, between now and that time that those happen, will it be discussion amongst us of what changes we might like pursue?
Well, it'll be the tenth or now.
That's, that's work session on the tenth, right?
We've had multiple work sessions, so I mean, if there's. Spread it out now.
I gotta tell you, I barely scratched the surface of it a moment before it's announced.
No.
So I don't feel like.
Well, the tenth agenda isn't too bad.
Month between now and tenth will give me a lot of time.
Well, we need that decision by the twenty-fourth, right?
I'd say by, it's by early February.
Okay.
Well, I have a lot of things I could say, but we have fifteen minutes, so I'm sure we all have a lot we can say. If you're asking what we've like added, I would like pre-K to be something that gets a little more focused. That's a bigger discussion than we can have right at this moment. We're talking about it in the education.
As I say, we're talking about it next week too, so that's a good dovetail like a springboard, yeah.
But I mean, if I'm just giving my personal opinion here, I, I see that as an opportunity to open up some rooms in the school buildings. If we could do a pre-K center. We have land in North Liberty. You had mentioned that we've got a spot that could be used for that. We've got schools that are overcrowded. If we could open up elementary rooms, instead of making them pre-K, take it to the pre-K center. So that, if you're asking for things to be added, that's something I'd like to.
Yeah, that's a good one, yep. That's perfect for next week.
We included that and we talked about water.
What's that?
We said want water, because I know some restful family didn't want it.
Did we get a report back on that Duane had?
That I don't know. I just made a note of that. I'll find out.
Because I mean, we should have had that back by now.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing it, so I'll see if we've got that or where it's at at my point.
So would you prefer that I give you a long list of things that I want, or should I just email that to?
I mean, there's probably other things in my head. I mean, that was just something that's really.
It's up to you, man.
Maybe one thing you could do is if you all want to email them to me, I could get them all compiled.
No, I think for the community, though, they need to hear us say them personally and I don't like it being sent over email because then they don't know who it's here from.
Is there a meetings issue at some point?
What's that?
If you aggregate all our comments together in one place, is that something?
If I do it, no. If you do it, yes.
So what are the themes?
Well, one, I would like to talk at some point, some Plan B talk, and that's where the community comment or get conversation media. About Hoover is one of the things that was brought up as a Plan B, if the bond didn't pass. I'd also like to discuss track, which is not on there, as far as if that site is the right site to continue using that and if so, if we need to update it. Otherwise, there's an opportunity there, I think, that we can get rid of that building and relocate it somewhere else. So that land is necessary for people. Yeah, but not in that building.
I'm just saying.
Site.
This is North Liberty where we don't have to.
Right, the site. I'd also, depending on how the numbers look, there's a couple of schools that maybe you look at flipping, for example, Schimmick and Lemmy.
What do you mean flipping?
Order.
Order, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Click for you want some.
Make it nice and stuff.
Please, don't record.
The other thing that we haven't obviously talked about, but I'm sure we're going to, is the location of the school in North Liberty.
Yes.
Kind of a no-brainer, but we still haven't talked it or put it in, out, out there.
So that may be in the administrative recommendation that was helpful.
Those are the ones that off the top of my head.
That's a good one. All right, anything else? Go once, twice. See how far we can get this, Jane, I'm so excited.
So I'm going to put it out there, because it was on thought exchange. There was a question asked, does it need to be a hundred and ninety-one dollars? Or a hundred and ninety, but that'd be nice, a million dollars. Do we want to make it smaller?
Or do we need phases?
Well, the other question along those lines I've asked, then hopefully we're going to have some, maybe some sensitivities on is, like if SAVE gets extended, is it really, it's not really a buck sixty-two, so what do we think the tax rate in fact really is?
If SAVE gets extended, the tax rate can actually go in reverse if the board chose to do so. Remember, the two thousand seventeen was selected because we've got property tax falling off. So we're here, we want to add this much, but part of it is a refill of current tax that falls off.
Right, I just think we need a statement, property tax statement on, is what we think is going to happen.
With?
Property tax, so.
Yes.
Make an assumption that SAVE gets extended.
Yep.
Seventeen or eighteen, and then we're going to keep box taxed.
Sure.
Right, I can't talk anymore. Flat or a fifty cents or, I think we need to tell people that, because it gets into the, is the one ninety-one too expensive? Well, it's not. If SAVE can pay for it, then.
Sure, so just a couple of real quick examples. So if you, if the community passes the bond and SAVE passes after that, you can continue with the bond projects as is and use the SAVE proceeds to pay off the bonds. You can forego the bonds and the obligation to follow them to the letter and use the SAVE dollars as we have over the past few years, giving you more flexibility as a board to make decisions that may be more reflective of changes that take place demographically, community-wise, et cetera, or some combination of the two.
I'd just like your best guess at, it's going to pass, will it stay flat or what is it? Could be, you know, I think our highest tax rate ever was four sixty-two or something, thirteen sixty-two, make sure it stays.
Sure, we can give you goalposts on it.
Yeah, goalposts, great. All right, anything else on facilities master plan?
Career and technical, hills and man.
What's that mean?
Uh, greater commitment to career and technical at our secondary school. And hills as far as multipurpose room, gymnasium, that type of thing.
What we talked about last time?
Right.
Yeah, you'll see that in the admin record that comes in at the ten.
And man, potential for expanding the footprint, talking with the city.
Sure.
That type of a thing.
Yep.
And I, and I think it's a type of, we need to get board members, city admin, city council people and, and, you know, try and reach, you know, try and reach some common ground and, and make sure that we don't miss opportunities on that one while we've got, while we're going to be renovating it right now.
Man.
Man, yes. Well, and with hills too. I mean, the city of, city of hills is very interested.
They've been very cooperative, yes.
And, and wanting to make sure that when they're done, they have a beautiful school that's going to be there for, for decades, so. I don't think, I don't think rushing, you know, we don't want to just rush this thing through and then miss something that somebody, gives somebody reason to, to not want to agree with the plan or the bond.
I guess the other I might put on, those are the things you're talking about is north central that look like. Time, you know, in terms of the timing, just because how many people might be coming. And again, I just eyeball it so far, but.
This is why I'm so big on the capacity versus enrollment, because I think one is, people want to know the AC plan, simple, one pager, simple, simple. And then simple capacity versus timing.
Right.
I think if you can explain those two things, and that's what kind of came out in the thought exchange, explain those two things, you've got a long way to.
Right. Because even, even preparing for tonight, you know, going back to the enrollment projections report and the Swiss Army sheet, you know, crunching numbers that, and, and were up to our eyeballs in it. So the average Joe, average Joe needs to understand this on the one page that you started.
And just on that point, Steve, was that presentation that we had, that was direct from Richter?
Yes.
The big presentation?
Yep, that's, that's all.
And the executive summary is what we called cleanup.
That's the one we were trying to clean up, because we took the format from the last time that they did it, two years ago, and because they formatted theirs differently, our data wasn't, we weren't pulling the right stuff into the paragraphs because we wanted to make the format look the same and it was kind of a mess.
But the big presentation.
That's all theirs. Yep, that comes to us as a PDF, actually. We, we just pass it on.
All right, anything else? Facilities master plan, going for it. Fraternization.
Fraternization, yes.
Can we, can we? So can we?
What?
Can we kick this policy and governance? Review.
Well, we don't have a policy, huh?
We did, that's, that's why it was kind of.
No, but to review our current policies, the proposed.
Our current policy is no policy, right?
No, but proposal, if it's required.
So what's the ask? I'm sorry.
Kick fraternization, officially send it to people, come back to the board with a proposal.
Okay, so prepare a proposal to go before a policy and governance?
To get the issue to policy and governance to examine the examples and start to generate.
And then it comes to the board?
Yeah.
I get that. I'm more, I was talking about more of my role. Do you want me to present a proposal to policy and governance?
No.
Okay, no, just you.
Not necessarily, maybe policy.
You might need to be there.
Stephen's guy.
Yeah, that's what I asked more of.
Yes, he'll need to be there.
Okay, that's my question.
Jane, you'll need to be there.
Great. Okay, I just think it's important that we have, I, I think it's important that we have a policy because it's naive of us to think that with the large number of employees that we have, that situations where you have a superior who might be in a relationship with a subordinate that they evaluate and the potential conflicts that that would create, that we need to make sure that we have something in place to cover when such, an incident like that might arise.
Right.
And other schools have it and some examples have been provided on those things. The University of Iowa has it. I think the city by the city has a policy, so.
Is anybody in that line of work there?
I think we would love to take on task any policy and governance.
Same, right.
Anything else you want to cover, no?
I would just say that the union is also interested in this conversation, so there may be a need for them to be moved in.
Just interested in all, okay?
Just keep talking, we'll keep talking, so talk with you like I did before. If you have more items to share on that, we can discuss some policy and governance.
Sure, I like, please, please, yeah, and I don't know if I can sit in, I can sit in, I guess I can, because over four. If someone's gone, I'll sit in.
Kate, moving on then, Title Nine.
Title Nine.
A bigger conversation or the same type of thing?
Well, there was an incident on the third day of school at one of our schools where I think originally it was reported as a sexual assault and then it was deemed consensual, sexual relations. And it happened in a classroom during the school day. And it hasn't been, to my knowledge, or it hasn't been officially reported to the board, I guess is the way to say it. I have talked with the principal involved and filled me in on kind of the stories. I did have a discussion with Kingsley on it just to make sure that we didn't have Title Nine viol, you know, pretend it's, it's a Title Nine situation. And along those lines too, I'm just curious where in our student behavior and statistics. And along those lines, too, I'm just curious where in our student behavior and statistics, where an incident like that would be in, where it would be in the data, or if it's not in the data, and I'm concerned that, you know, we have this going on in the classroom during the school day. And it wasn't really brought to our attention.
So Phil, I'm just, and we, you know, those of us with UI with email addresses, we're notified every time there's a sexual assault on campus. Are you thinking that there should be a policy along those lines, or that some?
I, I'm just as a.
Some portion, like the board?
Right, and, and that's kind of what kind of triggered me, too, is that, you know, there's a hot color at every time that there's even a report of this. And, uh, I'm concerned, I, I, first off, I'd like to know how often or how infrequent this happens.
Guys, where's this best worked?
I think we're getting in dangerous territory with FERPA and student, you know, information, and so.
No, I understand. No, I'm not asking for, I didn't ask for any student names or anything like that.
But you're talking about the situation, and that's highly problematic, because there's a student that, in a, in a situation's a potential victim, there's a student that's also, uh, potentially been accused of something, so talking about those situations are very problematic in a public forum.
That's why the university, the university model might be, because they're.
Right, you're not dealing with minors in that situation, here we're dealing with minors as well, so I just think it's, it's problematic to talk about any specific situation, if we want to talk frequency or where that data is recorded.
Frequency, where, where do I find it in here?
Right. Well, that's last year's data, so if you're talking about situations from this year.
Nothing happened last year.
What, I know the chart from the, the category you have here.
Well, I, I don't know what category it would be on.
So we can, I mean, we can look at that information and report back, I mean, because, you know, we look at it from, if you want to use a particular situation that we're talking about, you know, that was, how we report is also problematic, because if, if we had initially sent a report out about a situation, a sexual assault occurring, that was then changed later on, and so we're giving you information that would ultimately be false in the beginning, could come back to change later on.
So maybe we disagree, and I have no interest in the board being informed about this type of stuff. I understand Phil's request, though, about where's it fit in the data, I don't understand the trends, and that makes sense to me. I don't want to know any of the details, because it's problematic for a confidential standpoint, it's problematic if there's appeals.
It's problematic to the board's role.
It's board, we gotta be arm-like, but it's fair to ask, show me the data.
Yeah, and we can look at that, I mean, there are, I will say that when we, when you talk about, um, overall, you know, sexual assault, they, um, I, we, we need to kind of, uh, sorry, lose my train of thought, we need to kind of, uh, talk about school building compared to off-campus. I mean, that's, that's an important piece of this as well.
So I said, where's this best worked, is this a work session, is it committee, is it, you want to come back with something, or?
We can, we can do a work session, I mean.
I think probably a work session to look at our behavior data and see where, where that would fit.
For some of the questions.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, I, I think it's a valid question, because I'm not seeing a category that would fit here. I'd like to think this is a pretty infrequent situation, that's also why I think it's a problematic case, because there are not a lot of them, you know, so I think that's something, as you talk about those, it's, well, it's a problem, so I think looking at this and then knowing, okay, if we do get those reported, how is that reflected on any behavior data, if there's consequences?
All right, I'm trying to finish, so we'll bring it back to work session.
Yeah.
All right, anything more on this topic?
When you say work session, we're talking about next work session, I'm always, want to make sure.
If you guys are ready, how about you tell us where, where you're ready, if it's that easy to define, I think we're pretty full the next work session, but.
We'll see what we can pull together, and we'll put it on the appropriate agenda.
Yeah.
Easy answer, short discussion, and let's put it on.
Yeah.
And if every, and if, and if we're complying with all time align and everything's, and policies flow through perfectly, great. That, that's, that's excellent, but, uh, I don't think ignoring issues, uh.
Uh, we're not ignoring the issue.
No, no, I, I'm.
And, and we're not reporting it because, right.
To you, Steve, I'm just saying, in, in deference to.
I know, but. But we don't, we don't report it to you, because the advice given to us is that's protected information, and therefore we don't share it with you. And so that's why we don't, when there is any kind of assault that takes place, you know, we're not pushing that out on a daily basis that there was an assault here, an assault there, et cetera, because our, the advice given to us is that's protected information under FERPA. We can certainly ask legal counsel for, uh, greater specificity on that, to ensure that we are, uh, complying with that and yet still providing you as much information as we can.
So my question is, if I said board member goes and asks, I'm just thinking about Phil's example, is a principal required to give us that information about that situation?
No, actually, I'm not sure, sure.
No.
That you're not supposed to do that, and that's a violation of our own policies.
So.
Be separate show together?
We need to address that.
Yeah, please, because that concerns me, that we shouldn't, as board members, have access to go in and ask about specific situations to our principals, because we're violating our own board policies and our own district policies if that information's relayed back to us. I mean, I'm just, I'm really thinking, like, if I was that child's parent, I may not want that certain board member to know that. I'm not, I'm just saying, the situation to me, causes me as a board member to be concerned about, do we have the right to access our principals in that way to get information, or is there a way that we're supposed to do that without being a violation of our own board norms, policies, goals, and then also violating our students' rights?
Yeah, and so there's.
I think there's case law, that board members are entitled to confidential information, and they're doing their job. Do our members, they want to keep that thing?
If they offer the board, an individual.
Uh, it was individual board members, too.
Yeah, and so I think that, you know, there's a couple of different.
Hey, so, do we have a follow-up?
Yeah.
No, I just, I was just asking, because that just had me a moment like, whoa.
Further discussion on this one? Is the hearing document?
Okay. Two minutes?
Or under, I can finish. It's not a big deal, we had the hearing on Stephanie Van Housen, it's gonna be ancient history at this point. Uh, I wrote up my reasons for why I voted the way that I did, I thought, well, you know, if someone ever looks that thing up, it would be nice if they could find that statement somewhere, people can disagree. Uh, Appendix Six says the majority at least is supposed to issue a statement of reasons, and that's not my issue, because I'm not a majority. Uh, it's just voting up or down, I'd like to make it available on the, I guess you'd have to put it on the agenda for that night, September sixth, I think it was, um, in order for somebody to access it if they were looking for it when they looked up that hearing, yes or no, I don't, you know, just.
Wasn't it in the paper?
What's that?
Wasn't it in the, the?
Well, again, just, you know.
Well, I think at some point, I guess that published it.
That's what I'm saying, I'm like.
But that's not where you go to find it, if you're looking for.
I'm just asking.
It's just a minority opinion on the, on the rule.
So it's a larger question, can minority opinions be included in?
In Appendix Six.
Well, I think, I think that starts getting tricky, right, because when people write editorials about their opinions about how we vote, I'm, I'm not trying to pick on a re, I'm just saying, like, do we start including that also in our different board?
Well, I guess the only difference is Appendix Six literally says, the board is supposed to issue a statement of reasons. You know, again.
Is that the board or individual?
Issue a public statement regarding its, regarding its decision.
Let's just get this off the agenda.
Regarding the board decision.
Well, just so you know, so I followed up with Steve and, I think it was Joe, right?
Yeah.
Is the statement required now, and again, maybe we can clean up Appendix Six a little bit, but their, their point of view was no, because it was in open meeting. So the statement was made in the open meeting, and you've got the open meeting minutes. Now, in Appendix Six, it's possible that a lot of it happened in a closed session, which is where you maybe need to come out, in fact, the whole thing could happen in a closed section, if you chose not to take any action, there'd be nothing in public, in which case you'd want to come back and probably at least make a. But the statement would probably be, we're choosing to take no action, I mean, that'd be that sort of.
I would be supportive of following number six, I have part six of Appendix Six, the board will, in a timely fashion, issue a public statement regarding its decision, the board's decision. Which essentially, in my opinion, would be two sentences.
Well, which was in the minutes.
Exactly.
Now, I, again, my last point on this, retrospectively, adding something to the agenda, I think is a slipper slope in terms of, because I think you get into all sorts of things, to add this to.
Yeah, although it seems like some of it we've done that, we've got, you know, attachments, sort of, that aren't initially on the agenda, we looked at them that night, we put them on the agenda.
No, you're right, if, if it was reviewed in the meeting, we put it on.
Yeah, and Chris, didn't you bring that up at the, at the, at the hearing at summer?
I didn't mention it, look, if there's four people that don't want to put it on, that's fine, I was just getting, I didn't get at it.
I'm not interested, I think you got it covered here, that's my thought.
I mean, is that, that's all?
All right, doesn't sound like it.
Are we taking, are we taking this off of here?
No, no, I'm, we're just trying to close the topic.
Is it in our board?
Won't be where anybody looks for it.
We're trying not to carry this forward to another meeting.
Right.
Is it officially in our board?
That's about right, yes, we're.
Entertaining Washington, John? Sorry.
All right.
Chris, or Brian Second, all chairs, say aye.
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 A opposed. Screen.